Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the September thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one Marion City Council meeting. I'd like to start our meeting off this evening by asking everyone to please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Sissom.
Here.
Councilmember Debold.
Here.
Councilmember Hans.
Here.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Here.
Councilmember Naff.
Here.
Councilmember Neal.
Here.
Councilmember Pope.
Here.
Councilmember Silvers.
Here.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Here.
Very good. We'll go to public items next, and under the heading of Public Items, members of the public are encouraged to use this time to make comments about matters that do not appear on the agenda. Comments about items on the regular agenda will be taken as each item is considered. Please note that there's a five-minute limit on public comments. And also, in accordance with Governing Body Rules of Procedure, the city reserves the right to refuse public comments that are personal, impertinence, or slanderous. I have one person who's signed up on our public comments list, so I'll call Nancy Hupp to come forward and introduce herself, and please list your address for the record. Welcome to the City of Marion.
Good evening, Mayor Sissom, council, and city staff.
You don't need to do that.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be standing here on the other side of business. But I wanted to take this opportunity to kind of update you on Flag for Freedom events. If you remember, you, as a council, approved partnering with the Marion Community Center Foundation for the Flags of Freedom Display and the Use of Public Ride-Away in assistance with the program. It's been a very busy weekend for Flags for Freedom. Our flags have been out throughout the city. There were a hundred and fifty flags over at the Heart of America Patriot Foundation Golf Tournament this morning. They had a beautiful program. A lot of veterans there, they had thirty-six teams of four to play golf. And they recognized by name the Flags for Freedom and appreciation of using our flags for their event for the past ten years. Our flags are also going to be up with an American Royal event this coming weekend. And they were out at the old Sprint Campus for the Olathe Running Club event. So the flags are out there. One of the things when groups use our flags, I, we have signs that say Flags from Flags for Freedom, Marion, Kansas. And I ask that these groups using the flags prominently display so that people will know Marion is out there, very visible. All of this wouldn't be possible with the assistance, without the assistance that we receive. Earlier this year, Jenna sent out a request for city staff if any of them wanted, wanted to use the volunteer, some of the volunteer hours that there are allotted, to help with the flag, putting new flags, fifty-five new flags on poles. Absolutely no surprise that the finance ladies, Donna, Trish, and Sheri volunteered to help. And along came Councilmember Pope and Councilmember Hans. With the six of us, we put fifty-five new flags on flag poles in just under an hour and a half. Good teamwork gets the job done quickly. So, we appreciate very much those, those city employees using some of their valuable volunteer hours to help out. We're going to be closing out the year again this year with the annual youth group over from the Latter Day Saints Church on Seventy-first Street. We'll be putting up the flags on the I-35 hillside again. They contacted me and they want to use the flags again.
Is that for Veterans' Day?
That's for Veterans' Day, yes. And I want to acknowledge all of the assistance, the moral support that we received from Jim McDonald and the Public Works crew. Whenever I let them know we're going to have a group down there picking them up, they make sure that the aisleways are clear, they're ready to jump in if need be. It was a good, good move when we moved the storage of the flags down to Public Works. It feels better. So, a big thank you to all of you. And I can't leave here without saying thank you and congratulations to Anna and the park staff. They had many, as you well know, many, many, many challenges this past year to get the community center open, to comply with all the COVID restrictions. And Cole, I think, has done a wonderful job of managing the pool. Again, there were hiccups, but you all have done an amazing job. And they too are tremendous support to our Flags for Freedom and the Marion Community Center Foundation. So, thank you very much.
Thank you for being here. We miss you.
I miss you all, too.
Okay, again, we don't have anyone that's signed up for public comments, but I would certainly invite anyone else. Go ahead, ma'am, you've come up. I think you've been here before, just make sure you list your name and address for the record.
Nancy Hammond, fifty-eight forty-five Perry Lane. And I just want to say that the Patriots run, like she said, and Folds of Honor, the marathon was awesome. You got so many compliments on those flags. And today at the tournament rocked. I mean, we had a couple guys, and the ceremony was just absolutely beautiful. I mean, it just, it rocked the whole house. But, anyway, I wanted to say thank you so much for that, and it was neat to see Marion, Kansas, all weekend long. And I gotta leave because we have another event this evening for the night run. So, but I do want to draw your attention to this. And it's been something I've been working on because I am running for city council and it's on my pamphlets. Marion School, we had a kid that was hit by a car. So I want to bring this to your attention. I've been studying the roads and going over everything. I think we need a pedestrian light down there really bad. We about had another lady hit by a car there. I sat there for one hour with a resident. We watched eleven people go right through that light, I mean, that stop sign. And that was during school hours. And I was going to propose maybe we put in a pedestrian light and maybe two speed bumps there because the traffic's just horrible.
Are you talking about in front of Marion Park?
Yes, yes. And on the side, we're at Sixty-first Street. The cars line up, that's where we had a child that was hit by a car. Fortunately, he didn't have to go away in the ambulance, but, you know, he got a little boo-boos, got shook up and everything. But we do need to do something about that because, you know, one life is just too precious to, you know, especially our children, you know. So, I thought I'd mention that tonight. And I'm sorry I have to leave again, but I got a Folds of Honor event. So...
Well, thank you for being here.
Yeah, and thank you all for doing such a great job. Thank you so much.
Anyone else wish to come forward, public comments? Okay, hearing done, we're going to move to Consent Agenda. There's only one item on the consent agenda this evening, and that was Consider Approval of the Minutes of the City Council Meeting from August twenty-third, two thousand one. And unless there's discussion on the part of the council, entertain a motion in a second. Bob Pope.
Mayor, I'd move that the council approved Consent Agenda, item number one.
Mr. Silvers?
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Debold.
Aye.
Councilmember Hans.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Aye.
Councilmember Naff.
Aye.
Councilmember Neal.
Aye.
Councilmember Pope.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Aye.
Very good. Next is, is the mayor's report, and before we get into the proclamation, and since Anna's name's been mentioned enough times tonight, I'm going to add to it that we had a wonderful, wonderful car show on Saturday. The weather was great, the cars were great, looked very well-run. I know we get a lot of volunteers to do that, but the city's part of the team. And we had staff directing traffic, volunteering their time, and as usual, it turned out great. And so, thanks to everybody who did that and was involved with that event. Our second, I think that's our second, and maybe with the new one, it may be third, but our second-most-attended event probably in the city during the year. Does that sound about right? So it is very important.
Mr. Mayor?
Mm-hmm.
What was our count this year?
Our what? It was two eighty-seven, something like that, no?
Two seventy-four.
Two seventy-four. Okay. And that's probably second high. I think we've had, haven't we had close to three hundred once?
Two eighty-two.
Oh, two eighty-two, wow. Okay, wow, close.
It's not like we're trying to keep track of those numbers at all.
Yeah. That's great. Okay, a while back, Councilwoman Yodrich contacted us about an idea for acknowledging groups that are important to the city of Marion. And we agreed that more needs, more needs to be done in that area. And so, I'm encouraging my successor to continue the effort to issue monthly proclamations that are appropriate. And we're going to start this, with this one for this month, and it actually takes in effect on the fifteenth of September. And I'll read this proclamation, and it'll become evident what it's about. Whereas, the city of Marion is welcoming and inclusive and dedicated to improving the quality of life for those we serve. And whereas, what began in nineteen sixty-eight as Hispanic Heritage Week under President Johnson and was expanded by President Reagan in nineteen eighty-eight to cover a thirty-day period starting on September fifteenth, the United States observes Hispanic Heritage Month. And whereas, Hispanic Heritage Month celebrates the histories, culture, and contributions of those whose ancestors were indigenous to North America as well as Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, and Central and South America. And whereas, the purpose of Hispanic Heritage Month is to create awareness of the contribution of people of Hispanic heritage to the American culture. Many people of Hispanic heritage serve as civil rights leaders and community organizers, politicians, teachers, journalists, first responders, artists, healthcare professionals, athletes, inventors, entertainers, and more. And whereas, Hispanic Heritage Month is tied to the celebration of the rich tapestry of our community and reflects an array of distinct cultures. Now, therefore, I, Ken Sissom, on behalf of the City Council of Marion, do hereby proclaim September fifteenth to October fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one, as Hispanic Heritage Month, and encourage our community to join us in celebrating the great contributions of Hispanic and Latino-Americans to our city, state, and nation. Proclaim this thirteen-day of September, two thousand twenty-one. So, very good. That concludes what I have on the mayor's report. We're going to move next into council items. The very first item is Consider Approval of a Resolution Amending Section seven point oh-two regarding holidays of the employee's handbook. Julie?
Good evening, mayor and council. The item before you tonight is Consider Approval of a Resolution Amending the Holidays in the Employee Handbook. In your packet, you received a redline copy of the proposed changes, and we can just briefly go over those. Hopefully, it was fairly straightforward, but we'll go over those, just in case there's any questions. So, the first thing that we would change, the handbook says that the holidays, the following holidays are typically observed by the city. And then the next sentence says, "To the end of the year, the governing body will designate by resolution the holidays." So it kind of gives the indication that maybe these are the holidays, maybe not, they could change. I would say in the seventeen years that I've been with the city, the holidays have not changed, although we do it formally every year, council adopts that. So, it doesn't really make sense to kind of have that contradictory language in there, so we would suggest removing that. The second change would be adding the recently designated federal holiday of Juneteenth, so it would be June nineteenth. It would be an additional holiday that city employees would receive. And then the third change is reflective of when the December twenty-fifth, the Christmas holiday, falls on a Tuesday, that, that Monday would be also an additional holiday. In the past, staff typically drafts the holiday schedule, and in those years when that December twenty-fifth falls on a Tuesday, we would include that Monday and cross our fingers and hope that council agreed with that. And in the seventeen years that I've been here, it hasn't happened very often because, obviously, it only happens every so years. But we've all been agreeable to that. So it would just reflect all these changes. We would not have to go through the, the process every year of drafting the holidays and the council approves it, and, and staff is, you know, did council approve the holiday schedule yet? And so, it just makes it cleaner.
Can I add that the same applies, or it used to on Thursdays, too?
Yes.
Day was on a Thursday, you always got the Friday after.
Did I miss that part? Yes. If it's on a Thursday, then you would observe the Friday after as a holiday as well. So it's just memorializing it, formalizing it. We don't have to go through that process every year. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. Yes?
I'm assuming that with additional holidays, that some services, like police, for example, and fire, have to, have to continue to occur. What is the financial impact of adding those holidays in, in terms of, is there overtime, double-time pay for those days? And is that included in the current, you know, in the budget where this is going to take effect?
There is a financial effect. I did speak with the finance director about that. She didn't seem to indicate that it was a major impact for the budget this year or going forward.
That is correct.
Just was wondering kind of approximately what, what...
Oh, yeah. I mean, every holiday has a, a dollar sign attached to it, obviously.
I would expect to, I mean, you've got to have a certain amount of cushion, cushion in there every year because on those, on those years where we have a Thursday, Friday for Christmas, as opposed to just Friday, that's an additional day.
Sure, yeah.
Yes.
It slides through year to year, I'm sure.
It can vary, yes. Anybody else?
Any questions?
Any questions?
Okay, and I think what we're looking for...
It's just approval, so the, whenever we amend the employee handbook, it has to be done by resolution. So we have the resolution, and then the changes are attached as an exhibit to that resolution.
So, take a motion, Ms. Hans?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I move that the council approve a resolution amending Section seven point oh-two of the employee handbook.
Second, Bob Pope. What, what did you say?
I second that, mayor.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Hans.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Aye.
Councilmember Naff.
Aye.
Councilmember Neal.
Aye.
Councilmember Pope.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Debold.
Aye.
Motion passes eight-zero.
Very good. Next item is Consider Approval of an Ordinance Amending Section two dash twenty-three of the Marion Code of Ordinances. This is a first reading.
Okay. Back to the holidays.
You're pretty busy tonight, aren't you?
Yeah. And this is a bit of a cleanup item as well. As in the action form, our city code says that whenever it's a legal or a national holiday, that we can cancel the council meeting by resolution. And as we could see in our official city holidays, those aren't reflective of every national or legal holiday. So there are some holidays, like Columbus Day, Presidents' Day, and Veterans' Day, that may fall on a city council meeting because typically those are the, on a Monday. Our practice has not been to, to cancel the meeting. City offices are open, city employees are working, we're having the meeting. So it's mostly just a clarification issued that we would change the term "national" or "legal" holiday to "official" city holiday. That way, it's very clear of when we would want to cancel a meeting. Now, the only time that this has really occurred is probably on Memorial Day. Sometimes that holiday falls on that second Monday, and then we pass our resolution and we cancel the meeting. This is a first reading, so we don't need any action tonight, but I am open for questions if you have any.
This is pretty heavy stuff we got going on here this evening.
I know. Very in-depth.
Takes some time. That's why you get an extra two weeks to think about it. So thank you very much for that.
Okay.
The third item for consideration this evening is Consider Approval of an Ordinance Amending Chapter twenty-six of the Marion Code of Ordinances relating to stormwater best management practices, and this, again, is a first meeting. Mr. Dyer?
Evening, Mayor. Councilmembers Brian Dyer, Community Development Director. This evening, what we have for you for the first reading is an ordinance, as the mayor mentioned, toward the adoption of best management practices for stormwater. We've got a lot of acronyms in here, kind of a long story, but I think it's important you understand what this is all about. So, in two thousand nineteen, the Kansas Department of Health and Environment, KDHE, issued the city its per, its National Pollution, Pollutant Discharge and Elimination System, NPDS, Water Pollution Control Permit. So what that permit is, essentially, it's a permit that allows us to discharge our stormwater into navigable streams within the United States. NPDS is something that comes from the Clean Water Act, something that's administered at the federal level by EPA, Environmental Protection Agency, which they pushed down the requirements to Kansas Department of Health and Environment, who pushes the requirements further down to, to the locals. So, with the new permit in two thousand nineteen, the standards for water quality increased, again, they, they usually increase every time we get a new permit. And the city submitted a stormwater master plan to meet those standards and those requirements. Again, stormwater, we're all used to the quantity side of stormwater, that's our floodplain, that's our detention, that's things like that. But then the other side of stormwater is the quality. The quality of stormwater is it comes off our streets, comes off parking lots, and enters into Turkey Creek, which is obviously our main, main stream that goes through here. Also, I wanted to note that Turkey Creek is in a creek that's listed as an impaired creek at the, at the federal and state level, which ups the requirements that, that the city has for NPDS. So, with our stormwater master plan that we submitted, the city committed to adopting best management practices for stormwater. We are the last metropolitan, metropolitan Johnson County that has not adopted best management practices. All our other neighbors have adopted it. So there's two main things this evening that's in the ordinance for, considered for adoption. The first one is, and again, long title, is the Kansas, Kansas City Metropolitan Chapter of American Public Works, APWA, and Mid-America Regional Council's marks, Manual of Best Management Practices for Stormwater Quality, BMP Manual. That is this book. What that is, is a, it outlines, describes, is very prescriptive in what development needs to do to meet stormwater quality standards. It's, it's a very detailed, in-depth book. It is something that has a lot of information into it, a lot of calculations are involved with it. And again, it is a book that the majority of the Johnson County cities has adopted. The other thing that is in the ordinance requesting for adoption is Section fifty-one hundred, Erosion and Sediment Control, otherwise known as APWA fifty-one hundred. So those are the two documents that, in order for us to meet our NPDS requirements, we are in need to adopt. Now, how does this affect our development process? Well, the really easy one is fifty-one hundred doesn't affect our development process. That's the sediment control, that's the runoff from construction activity. We already do that through our building permit codes. So what that is, is when you see silt fences at construction sites, you see what we call gutter buddies in, in storm inlets, that's a plan that the developer builder has put through the building, community development, as part of the building permit that we review. So that is really not going to change. We already are doing that. However, the adoption of the BMP manual standards will change development and what requirements we have of development and how they meet those requirements. Currently, we ask development, when they come in, to do more BMPs, to try to do BMPs, to improve the stormwater quality. With the adoption of the manual, it'll be a prescriptive. It outlines what they need to do and how they can meet it. Now, there's different ways you can meet the requirements. If you're familiar at all, there's things like green filter strips in, in parking lots. Then, that's kind of the green, that's the softer side of ways to do things. And then there's more hard stuff, like vaults, essentially like a sand oil separator. It's a vault that can go underneath a parking lot or something like that, that the water runs into affluent, or the pollutants are captured in that vault, and then the water runs out. But there's a, those are just two very small things, very different kinds of ways to do it, but there's a wide variety of things. So, when the development comes in, they will have to submit to us a description of how they're going to meet our BMP standards, very much like they do right now for our stormwater standards, stormwater runoff standards. They provide us a stormwater master plan to show us how they're going to make sure the amount of water running off the site is the same as it is before development, pre and post-development. So, they'll be providing two different, two, an additional document, so two documents to go with the stormwater. Those documents will be reviewed by the city engineer, as he reviews right now our stormwater master plan. He will also be reviewing the BMP plan as well. So, really, again, we've tried to line these up together, so if you do a stormwater master plan, you're also going to do a BMP master plan. I think, real quick, there are some exemptions from having to do the BMP, very much, very similar to the exemptions for having to, whether or not you have to do a stormwater master plan as well. So, real quickly, those exemptions are any additions or improvements or repairs to existing single-family duplex dwellings, constructions of buildings, structures or appurtenances, pertinent service roads, drives, and walks on site already, having previously provided a stormwater control study as a part of a larger development, remodeling, repair, replacement, improvements to any existing structure or facility that does not increase the area of impervious surface by ten percent, improvement of any site having a gross land area of less than one acre, and then construction of a new single-family or duplex unit. Again, very similar to our, our stormwater master plan requirements. So, again, this is the first reading of this. We'll have this, plan to have this on for your next meeting for the second reading. And again, it's to meet our NPDS requirements. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Neal?
In terms of the practical changes with respect to developers, are, what's, is there likely to be a significant, or any significant cost, additional cost, that, other than what we were previously requiring?
Most likely. However, I think it's important to note that when developers come to us, they are surprised we don't require BMPs. So these are already things that they are paying for and doing in other communities. Again, like I said, we are the last community. So, so yes, there will be an increased cost, but it's no more or less than what they have to do in any of our neighboring cities.
And are those costs, I would assume those costs, if there is TIF funding, would be eligible for recovery under TIF?
Uh, yes.
Thank you.
Ms. Hans?
It, it seemed to me when I read through this, there was a lot of talk about development, but then there's an exemption for redevelopment or infill?
Mm-hmm. There is, there is.
What do we have besides redevelopment and infill?
The redevelopment or infill, that is, I don't, that is a possible exemption, that is not a definitive exemption. Working with the city engineer on this, yeah, the community development may, may, may waive or modify. It does not say we will, it says we may waive it. So, again, and very much like what we have with our stormwater master plan, you have the ability, actually, I have the ability, but we usually bring it to council, to waive the stormwater detention requirements. So, very much like that. In, in discussions with the city engineer, he very much was cognizant of, of, well, the manual is great, sometimes it's kind of a new square peg into a round hole, particularly for areas like Marion where there is redevelopment. And he was very much wanting to make sure that the city has the ability to perhaps accept a plan that doesn't meet the, the manual specifically, but still does what we needed to do. So he was very much, he was very much in support of the manual, but he also very much wanted the ability to the city to be able to accept something that really makes sense. Perhaps the book doesn't, doesn't say it makes sense, but it does make sense for the city of Marion.
In addition to that, so, if we're trying to really improve water quality, what about all of our existing developments?
Obviously, those would be just, those would have to be redevelopment situations. When they come in to do redevelopment, that would be a significant expense to ask somebody to tear up a parking lot to put in filter strips. That would be a significant expense. That would be a significant expense.
So going forward, it sounded like we would be going, someone would be going back and checking with the BMP people to be sure that anything after January twenty twenty-two stayed up to par. But everything we've got so far, we don't have that?
We don't have any BMPs that meet the standard, no.
Okay.
Mr. Silvers?
So actually, Chris's question answered my first question, which was, is anyone grandfathered in? But my next question is, I had a lot of concern when we were looking at and approving the parking lot for the new Jeep and Hyundai parking lot, because it looked like there were curb cuts that allowed stormwater to run towards Turkey Creek. So does this affect, does the BMP now affect how water leaves their parking lot and sheds off into Turkey Creek?
If they were, if this were adopted and they were to come in, it would be a different plan. It would, they would have to mitigate their stormwater runoff in a different fashion.
Okay. And so I guess I would want to say that I wish that this was adopted earlier, because that was a big concern of mine that I brought up in that meeting. And now it's something that will not be addressed unless there's, what, a major redevelopment of that property? Okay.
And the other thing I do want to mention that Councilmember Hands alluded to, as written, this ordinance would not take effect until January first of two thousand twenty-two in order to give all the folks we do business with an understanding that new regulations will be in place.
Just for clarification, and I'm pretty sure I know the answer, but in regard to what you were saying, there was an initial part of their plan, and again, I'm not alluding to that being current or ongoing, but they were talking about one time the possibility of putting a building on the parking lot that you're talking about after the fact, a year or two later. If they were, if they decided to do that and build a building out there or a new dealership there, then that would, again, that would trigger this?
Most likely not, since they're not increasing impervious surface.
Okay.
They'd just be putting a building on top of what's now concrete.
Got you. Mr. Caldwell?
Yeah, what are the consequences of not approving this?
We would have issues with Kansas Department of Health and Environment and possibly EPA as well.
So from a practical point of view, we need to adopt this.
That's correct. Mr. Neal?
Yeah, I'm certainly not saying in any way indicating opposition to it. I'm just trying to educate myself a little bit more. The NPDS Water Pollution and Control Permit is issued to the city of Merriam. How often?
I believe it's every five years.
Every five years. And does it contain some sort of testing requirements, or is it just practices?
It's mostly practices. That is, you're correct. It is mostly practices. We do through Johnson County Public Works, who really partner with us, really partners with us in a big way, because every year, the city puts together a pretty extensive document to show what we're doing to meet all this. So it's a pretty thick document to have to do. And we really partner with Johnson County on that. And a lot of things, we partner with Johnson County stormwater on it. And one of the things is, we do have, we do have testing stations that, when Turkey Creek enters Merriam and when Turkey Creek exits Merriam. And it's not happened this time, but I personally think that at some point in time in the next ten to twenty years, there may be very prescriptive requirements to say that the affluent in Turkey Creek coming in, you can't increase it when it leaves Merriam. And those are going, and when that happens, it is going to be, it's going to, yeah, it will be... We need to be integrating, we need to be moving forward as much as we can to make sure we are doing all we can for our stormwater runoff.
Can I follow up? I, you know, I certainly support doing everything we can to improve the quality, the stormwater quality. This question has to do with the exemptions and sort of the ability to, the may part. Does the may part impact our likelihood of getting our permit renewed? Because it's not a must, or it's...
We certainly don't believe so. Again, we worked, I worked closely with the city engineer on this, and we certainly don't believe so. And just going back to that, let's read the whole part of it here. "The community development director may waive or modify or modify any of the BMP manual standards to encourage the implementation of alternative or innovative practice that implement the intent of the modified standards and provide equivalent public benefits." So there is, so we can waive the standards, but we still have to get the same output that we are looking to get.
Perfect.
That, that's, and I should have elaborated on that earlier. So we're not waiving the book, per se. We are waiving, okay, the book says you have to do X, Y, and Z. Well, maybe it doesn't make sense, maybe A, B, C, and X gets the results we want. So that's why that isn't...
I thank you, and that's what I was hoping.
Ms. Hands?
When you said we're the last community, you meant Johnson County, not just Merriam?
We are the last metro community in Johnson County.
We are, Merriam is the last to approve this.
Metro community, yes.
Okay, wow.
You mentioned, and again, it's a little bit off the topic, but I'm curious, on the quality of our stream water on Turkey Creek, is it currently monitored that you know of?
Yes, it is. It is. It is monitored. The monitoring of affluent in a creek is really difficult to do because of, particularly creeks like Turkey Creek, because you have a big rainstorm, it's very flashy, everything flushes through. And then you have dry, dry streams. It is really a tough thing to do. But yes, we do have those, we do have numbers like that, yes. And they fluctuate in a big way.
Are we responsible for the creek in terms of if the water quality degrades? Is that somehow our responsibility?
That is exactly what NPDS is all about. It is our responsibility to make sure the water that, the stormwater that goes in there is clean as required.
Do we have any control over certain businesses who might be having a negative effect on the storm?
We certainly do, and we do pursue those things when we are aware of them. That is, that is another requirement of NPDS, is that we have, we have a map. The county does a great job helping, and so we can see where all the outflows are. And another part of the requirement is Public Works does do regular, does do inspections of some of those outflows. And if they see something that isn't right, they or us will pursue it up there to see if we see something in there. So, yes, we do pay attention, we do monitor.
And my final comment is, I would be concerned about our liability for businesses that might have a negative impact on our stormwaters, that we're already aware of and that have had problems in the past. In fact, the area is not far from Public Works.
Right, right. I would say, in general, our biggest problem, concern with Turkey Creek is the nitrates. It's fertilizer and pet poop. Those are, those are your big ones. Those are your big ones.
Mr. Pape?
Yeah, my question would be, how does the Merriam Drainage District play into this, remember? It's kind of their creek. I know it runs through our city, but what is their liability versus the city's liability concerning the floods and what's going in and through our creeks?
We hold the permit for the discharge. Merriam Drainage District really is more on the quantity side of things. They are not on the quality side of things. We are on the, we are the ones that hold that permit.
Thank you.
Chris, did you have another?
Yeah, that's my question, thank you.
Well, this is first reading. We can come up with a whole bunch more questions between now and two weeks from now. So thank you very much for the information.
Thank you, Mayor, Council.
Next item has to do with the Police Department, contingency funds and use for HVAC repairs. Director McDonald, how are you this evening?
Very well. Good evening, Mayor and Council. This evening, I'm seeking approval to allocate contingency funds for repairs to the HVAC at the Police Department. On July twentieth, there was a major failure for the HVAC for the upper portion of the Police Department. Our HVAC contractor determined a compressor, along with a variable frequency drive, unit failed. When they began part searching, we made arrangements to provide some portable cooling for that department. We tried to cool the entire upper section. That was not successful. We had high temperatures, and there's no wind, all the windows are closed, so that was not very successful there. The lead time for that was three to four weeks for those parts. There was a nationwide supply chain issue. Those parts were coming from overseas. During, the majority of the office staff ended up moving to City Hall, and then some moved downstairs where they did have their HVAC was working correctly. On September seventh, they finally got the air conditioning completed, and the portable cooling units were returned. So the cost of the units, portable units and the air conditioning is around thirty thousand dollars. So I'm open for any questions you have on that.
Mr. Neal?
Were these, were the units that failed part of the Police Department's building remodel? And that was relatively recently, so my question is, if they were, was there any warranty on those, or just kind of curious as to all that?
That's, they're about three years old, and you get a one-year warranty. And so they were two years out of warranty.
Is that, is that, is it common to have things fail like that that quickly?
It is not, it is not common for that to happen.
You mean to only have a, to only have a one-year warranty, or common for them to break down?
Common for them to break down that quick, yes, yeah.
Was that your question?
They were both my questions, so...
Yeah, and typically, it's a one-year warranty. You can usually buy an extended warranty. Typically, we don't do that when we own our equipment.
What are the chances of them breaking down, right?
Correct.
Mr. Caldwell?
This money's been spent, right?
It's owed now, yeah.
Yes, okay, we're committed. Okay.
And the purpose for this was, this is outside the budget, so whenever there's anything outside the budget. And if your next question might be, can we afford it? It comes out of a fund more than adequate to fund it, so. Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion. Mr. Pape?
Mayor, I would move that the council approve the use of contingency funds for HVAC repairs for the Police Department.
Ms. Hands? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Caldwell?
I'll second that.
There you go.
Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Caldwell?
Yes.
Councilmember Naff?
Aye.
Councilmember Neal?
Aye.
Councilmember Pape?
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers?
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich?
Aye.
Councilmember Debold?
Aye.
Councilmember Hands?
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
I understand there was one Police Department employee that stayed on the helm and refused to lead the ship during all this. Is that true?
There is one very hard-headed employee, yes.
I would prefer to think he's committed and dedicated.
Yeah, it was very warm up there, even with the portable cooling.
Perhaps it was, it was regarded as a sauna treatment.
I could go on, I'll just stop there. Thank you very much. Our CIP update is next.
So this evening, I have your September CIP update for our two thousand twenty-one street improvement program. These projects were East Frontage Road, sixty-seventh to seventy-fifth Street, the Mill and Overlay Program, our sidewalk maintenance and repair program, and the West Vernon Place Preliminary Engineering Study. The Mill and Overlay Program is substantially complete. SOD is scheduled to take place in the next two weeks. These roads were Craig Road, Goodman north of Johnson Drive, Perry Lane, south of fifty-first, fifty-fifth Street, Antioch to Hadley, fifty-fifth Terrace, east of Goodman. The sidewalk maintenance and repairs, which took place along sixty-first Street, sixtieth Terrace, Knox, and sixtieth Street, have all been completed. Hydro seeding is scheduled for those streets, and that's supposed to be going to take place in the next few weeks. The CarMax in East Frontage Road is substantially complete. That was our cars project. All curbs, sidewalk, asphalt surface, pavement markings, landscaping, and tree plantings have been completed. The traffic signal upgrade there at sixty-seventh and East Frontage Road, the pole has been installed. Weather permitting, the five-section head is scheduled to be installed this week. They're going to do that in the evening. That will give the eastbound sixty-seventh Street traffic a protected left turn onto northbound East Frontage Road. And SOD's restoration is scheduled to take place in the next few weeks. And then the final one I have is the West Vernon Place Preliminary Engineering Study. BHC has completed the existing condition evaluation, and we expect to receive the completed study next week. I spoke to the engineer in charge, and they are just working on the final proofreading of that document before they give it to us. Again, I'm here to answer any questions.
Any questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Engel?
Only I had, only item I had, Mr. Mayor, was really just an echo of what several people have said tonight, and that is that the car show was fantastic. I'd like to thank Anna and her staff, Public Works, Julie and her army of volunteers, and all the volunteers present and just that were there, took time out of their day on Saturday. It was fantastic. The weather was great. We had a nice breeze. It couldn't have been a better event. I received a lot of positive comments from people that were leaving. Actually, I had a couple neighbors that went to it that I didn't realize were there at the same time I was, that came back and were telling me how great it was. So again, thanks to Anna, her staff, and Julie, and all the volunteers. It's fantastic. Other than that, I'll be out of the office on Friday, but available by phone. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Well, I need to apologize for my manners, because we have someone sitting next to you that maybe the rest of the council doesn't know who they are. And we know it's not Ryan, so...
Yes, I apologize.
Hi, yeah, thank you. Ryan and I sometimes do look alike, so very astute.
Not tonight, I'm sorry.
So my name is Spencer Lau. I work for Ryan, as he would put it, with him, as maybe I would put it, here for him. He's under the weather, so you might see a little bit of me here and there, but nice to meet you all.
Thank you for being here this evening.
My pleasure.
Tell Ryan we hope he gets the feeling better.
I apologize.
So you have nothing further?
I have nothing further. Happy to answer any questions.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Bob?
I make a motion we adjourn, Mayor.
Chris?
All in favor?
Aye. Aye!
Meeting's adjourned.